Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 to order. But can we please stand in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to begin with public comments. Anybody online who wants to do a public comment?
Yes, I'd like to speak. This is Paula Antolini.
Hi, Paula. Could you state your address for the record?
Sure, 19 Jacobs Lane.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk to you about the fact that you have not gotten back to me after several letters and another public comment at another Board of Selectmen meeting. Basically, about two issues. One is the fact that an employee allegedly broke a couple of laws and concealed or deleted public record or directed somebody else to. And the second issue is many, many, many problems with the P and Z in protocol and not following Robert's rules, et cetera. And there are other very important issues I'm going to be writing to you about. But what I don't appreciate is the fact that you've ignored everything that I have contacted you about. Is this the way they call it transparency?
Okay, Paula, I appreciate your comments. And obviously, in those letters, you gave me a lot to respond to. Number one, I'm not going to respond publicly to allegations against a town employee with that there's not been an investigation from anybody outside the town or anything like that. Happened before my watch. You know, anything would have been dealt with as a part of her employment previous to me taking the job. If there are, you know, actual allegations to come forward, or there's an investigation, offices of town, we would respond to that. But that's not something I can go out publicly and, you know, comment on. You know, where there's just allegations. As far as the other items we talked about, you know, planning and zoning is its own board, and I've talked to them about, you know, how they were in their meetings and giving them some advice. I can certainly respond to you when I'm done with that. Because, you know, like you, I want to make sure that every board in town has the opportunity to, you know, be their best selves for the public and orderly the way they do business. So that is something that I'm working on. And I'm certainly happy to sit down and talk to you about it or give you a call or respond with an email. You know, I'm sorry if it's taken a little bit to get back on those.
Can I respond?
Of course.
I'd like to say that you could have said all of what you just said in a response to me the first time. This is what I'm talking about. I was ignored, and I don't appreciate it. And I don't know what you want me to do at this point. There are other avenues I could do. But, you know, I don't really want to do that. I want to directly speak with you as you are saying you do with the public. But this first go around, and it's not really just the first time. I sent you two letters and I commented about the same items at another BOS meeting. And you never got back to me. And that's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. And just as you commented to me now that, you know, you can't speak about this, can't speak about that. You could have gotten back to me and said that instead of ignored me. So this is what I'm not happy about. And the second thing is to say that the planning and zoning is their own board, and, you know, nobody controls them. That's ridiculous. They have a protocol to follow. And they are approving projects or whatever you she happens in the board with not following protocol, and that's not fair to the public. And I would think you, as the first selectman, would want to look into that. Your reading of the FOI rules did nothing to cover the multiple problems that are happening at the P and Z, and they're just, they just keep happening. I don't know what else to do. You're the person we go to. If I go to them, you know, what's going to happen? They're going to say they didn't do this or didn't do that. So now what are you leaving me with to do an FOI? Or an ethics? What do you want me to do? I'm trying to deal with you directly on these improprieties that are happening at every meeting. At every meeting, including treating the public really poorly. People that are really, you know, the few people that come forward and want to also correct these improprieties, and they talk directly to the P and Z are made to are demeaned and told to, you know, go to the office, and I'll explain this to you later, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot going wrong, and this is not how a town is supposed to operate. So, you know, you can call me a complainer, but that's not what this is about. This is about getting to the bottom of what an employee did in front of our eyes. Okay? And how a town citizen had to come to the first selectman's office and try to get an original copy. You know, I'm not going to go into the details, but you know the details. They went to try to get an original copy of the public record and were denied, and they had to go through an FOI case to get it. And so you're just leaving this hanging and saying, oh, I can't talk about it, and that's that? You can't even say if it did go into litigation? I know you can't talk about the litigation. You can certainly inform the public if the town is being sued. And by whom? Because we know about some of it. It goes into executive session sometimes in in meetings, and it says who it's with. So why are you being non-transparent? It's exactly the opposite of what you said you wanted to be. Okay, we'll end that there, but that's my feelings on that, and I really like to see an improvement. I'd like you to indicate where you want me to take it from here. Okay? All right, I have another issue. You have, you know, agendas you're going to approve tonight from older meetings or minutes, I should say. There's something in the March 7th meeting minutes about the turf field approval of the 800,000. You went into a second motion made by Selectment Turzian, and he mentioned that the money was going to go towards turf field lighting, security, and maintenance. What is maintenance?
So the maintenance for the field is to purchase a, I guess it's a machine that drags behind it of the I guess we'll call it a trailer, but what it's used for is to groom the turf field, is my understanding. So that's part of the maintenance of that field that we bought that.
To what, the turf fields? What do you say?
It basically grooms the turf field. My understanding is you drag this, you drag this behind a small gator, like a small you know, when you see athletic trainers drive onto a football field in the little four-wheel cart?
Right.
It's one of those. It's a gator, and that's
Okay. All right, I was going to say that that was omitted because you mentioned the gator every time you talked about it, and this time it was not in the motion. So I didn't feel that that was included.
Well, that was included because that was that was maintenance and also security, which covered the cameras for the field.
Well, in other in other agendas, you had it listed as maintenance and the gator separately. So I thought that you did not include that. I just wanted a clarification.
Yeah, no worries. And I will, I will get ahold of you, and I'll be much better to answer some of those questions as fast as I can.
Well, these are not unimportant issues, is all I'm going to say. You know, and it was a little bit insulting, truthfully. Because I know you well, and to have you really ignore two letters and a public comment over several weeks. It was really insulting. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, so you know, we'll move to correspondence. I have one letter from Paula, actually. Basically, it's talking a little more about how we are implementing our board policy. The people of Bethel should be absolutely certain that all the P and Z commissioners and staff cannot have means of communicating using their phones or computers. If you recall, in the FOI policy that we sent out to all the boards to be read that we cannot be using our phones or personal devices or any communication wise during a meeting. That becomes subject to FOI. However, in our conversations with FOI Commission, they did remind us that, you know, some of those things could be used for you know, instances where we need them in the meter meeting, such as in a place where there's no paper available. I think he used the term that we have to be on our best behavior and in our system is what he said. So you know, for all the boards and commissions, we're walking a very fine line to make sure that we do not use phones, not communicate or create any illegal, you know, meeting. Now, there's also some talk here of as far as having documents available beforehand. You know, it's something that we're working very diligent to fix. You know, post-pandemic or pandemic and post-pandemic, it's been quite a change to make sure that we have all the documents available electronically. And we do realize we have some improvements to make in our website. We're working on that. In fact, we're going to revamp it pretty substantially. And also how we store documents from here on out to make it easier for the public to get information. It just does take a little time. We're working with a company right now that purchased the website that we have now. And it looks like we're going to have to move to a different company because of costs. So that is something we're working on every day. So that I just want to make sure that, you know, your correspondence was answers.
May I just say one more thing? You just reminded me. I want you to comment on something you just said that I that I forgot to say. I noticed that you read the FOI rules during a P and or they read, you had them read it during a P and Z meeting, and then the only other one I saw personally was the Public Site and Building Committee. But at the P and Z, I noticed that they read two different papers. And the Public Site and Building Committee only read one. And the second paper included a paragraph that said something like, and I'm paraphrasing, unless a paper copy was available. In other words, they could use their cell phones and laptops unless a paper copy was available. And so they're they're using that as the reason why they need to have laptops and phones. Now, I would think it's a paper copy is always available whether they download it themselves before the meeting, which they have availability of it way ahead of when the public does. Or they get it from the Planning and Zoning Office. They could have them print it out for them. You know, or have it handed out at the meeting. So in my view, it's almost distracting to see people on their laptops or phones, even if they are looking at documents having to do with the meeting. Because, you know, a lot of people are uncomfortable with that because you just don't know what they're doing on a laptop. They could be looking up something else. They could be getting a message from someone, even though they're not texting back. So that's the feeling out there. And so I was wondering about that statement saying unless a paper copy is available and why you had two papers read to the P and Z and not to other boards.
So I'll cover that. Yeah, I can cover that, Paula. What happened was I directed that we read an FOI policy at all boards. Okay, so all boards did it. And we sent that same thing out to the department head, so they were aware of it. My understanding is that second email probably came from a question that somebody had asked, which is why when we talked to the FOI Commission, they were clear that we were allowed to have laptops and we're allowed to have phones and such. And they use the example like when no paper was available. Now, I'll say this, at some point, I'm sure we're going to come up with a policy with respect to how we use, you know, digital agendas versus paper, because, as you might know, you know, paper does get quite expensive. We're moving into the 21st century here, right? We may look at a policy to allow people to do that, and I think we'll be well within the law and well within our rights with FOI as long as we're doing it all properly. So that's something I'm exploring. I'm certainly willing to get input from you to make sure that we're doing it in a way that, you know, the public doesn't question what elected officials are doing. But, you know, we're just not there yet.
Yeah, first collectman, Carter. It's very important that the people of Bethel get the same information that the people in the room get, in other words, people on Zoom. And right off the bat, you have a problem with half the room cut off, and that is including half the board. So that when they vote, you can't see who's voting. You can't see who's talking sometimes because they don't identify themselves. You know, so this goes back to the rules that they're supposed to go through the chairman and get permission to speak, no matter who it is. And it's a free-for-all. So you can't see who's speaking. And then as far as documents go, sometimes they're on the screen for the Zoom, but other times they show, you know, the person speaking, and he's pointing to the screen, and you can't see what he's pointing to. So that's number two. And then number three, most of the time you can't see the applicant or the applicant's representative because they're to the right of the screen. They're cut off also. And you don't even know who's speaking. They don't identify themselves. So there's lots of problems information-wise that need to get to the public that is not.
And I understand your frustrations with that. You know, obviously, not every every room and every meeting room was really prepared for what we do with all these, you know, public hearings and hybrid meetings. We are working on that, and I do appreciate the comments, Paula. I'm going to move on, though, okay?
Okay, and I'm going to be sending you a list of everything else. So let me make it clear that you said the P and Z is on their own, and you are not going to deal with any problems that are happening in the meetings?
Well, that's not exactly what I said, Paula. So if you're going to
That's why I want to clarify.
That's exactly what I said. So what I said is they are their own entity. They're their own board, right? They are responsible for how they conduct the board. I am looking into that to give every resource I can to help them do a better job. I've got a lot of ideas for them. But I'm just being very clear as to what I can and can't do. Okay, so I am very willing to work with them on this. It's very important to the public.
Well, what is the public supposed to do then?
Paula, Paula, I'd like to table the rest of it because
All right, very good, very good.
Thank you. Okay, so moving along. First, I'm going to support. So make sure that, yeah. Obviously, the big thing happening right now is the budget. Last night was, you know, a great public hearing in the sense that, you know, people offered a lot of support and a lot of concern both for the budget. One thing that I noticed that I want to I want to throw out there is that you know, in our budgeting process, I think we just need to do a better job of, I guess, somehow showing the public what goes into the budget process. A lot of folks got up yesterday, and they said that, you know, they didn't know how we came to the salaries, or they didn't know where we came from, because they don't, we see every meeting that we have. You know, they didn't see us, you know, getting all the feedback from all the department heads, you know, doing the deliberations of Board Selectmen, doing a deliberation for the Board of Finance, and, you know, where our thought processes were. Because I think that's something down the line that, you know, prior to a budget, they will put together a presentation on budget drivers. I've seen some other towns do that. This is the first time I've gone through this as a board selectman, but I think that's something we'll look at. So that's probably the big news. Oh, I said the bigger, bigger news is that, of course, with the schools, you know, found some more healthcare savings. That was a huge opportunity for the town. You know, you being here, Jen, is fantastic, because that just meant a lot to the town that you guys were able to literally sharpen your pencil and go back to the healthcare savings and cut out another, you know, $500,000, which is something the Board of Finance will be delivering tonight. It should put our budget under 4%, so we're about a 3.95, which is really great for the taxpayer. So that's probably the most exciting thing of my last week. We got a couple of other things cooking that I'll kind of save for the next first, first lightness report. Next up, consideration approval of Board Selectmen regular meetings. So I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 7th, 2023. And second, all favors?
I
opposed, none, motion passes. Let's see. Next up, I'd like a motion to consider the awarding of Bethel High School HVAC, H, excuse me, AH1, AHX1 air handler equipment bid. And motion? So, and second. Jen, would you like to make any comments on this?
Sure, AHX1 is actually the oldest air handler at the high school. It services the interior rooms in the 1975 portion of the building. It has four compressors. Three of them are currently down. And it's on our priority list of equipment to replace, and it is also part of the project that is going to be jointly funded by the Board of Education and the funding that as a board you already committed to that. So this bid was an equipment-only bid. So it's just for the air handler and new compressors. We went out to bid, and we specifically sent our, we published the bid on our, all the places we normally publish, but we also contacted four vendors in particular that we know do these sort of things. We only received one response. And it's from New England Applied Products, which is one of the vendors that we have worked with in the past, and it's for $170,055. So again, this is equipment only, and we wanted to award this bid and be able to put the order in place. Because the lead time to actually get the unit is 38 weeks.
Okay.
The specifications of our bid, so our engineering firm, Paul Rooney, designed the bid specifications and evaluated this response, so it needs our specifications.
Was this in any way, because of the last bid we approved, where we were looking at making the the swap out? This is the separate unit?
This is a separate unit.
Okay.
And the last that we were looking at also, in addition to the actual unit, included all of the services to remove the old one and install the new one. So this particular bid is an equipment-only bid. So it's just so that we can order this air handler because the lead time is so long.
I understand.
And we're going to go out to bid again to get a company to work to do the installation and removal, which is a fair amount of work because this particular handler is in a 10 house.
Okay.
So this is also, you just mentioned that's in the 855 and it has the forehead. Because your bid came in under that budget, so you were able to use that money to purchase this?
Yes, they're both under that.
Do you have an idea what the labor cost might be for this?
Well, we have some estimates that we actually received two estimates. We have one from Paul Rooney, then we have one from SCV, which I bring with me, I apologize. So I think
Well, maybe my question is would be are those numbers within the budget that we already have to complete it?
These parts can be contained within the budget. They are a little bit higher than we were initially hoping. But we have the ability to manage that because one of the components we haven't gone out to bid on is fans, ventilation fans for the bathrooms of the high school. So we haven't we haven't commissioned any of that work yet. So that's something we could delay if we need to.
So maybe my question, please state my question. There's monies available within the first grant?
Yes.
To install?
Yes, we have the money to install this.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't want you to see you get an air top, air handling unit sitting on top of the ground over there, and you can't install it. Okay, thank you. So
So I created a motion to discuss.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, please?
Yes.
Just briefly, you put this out to bid?
Yes.
Was it done through the town?
Yes, Brad's team put the bid out, and they had a procurement meeting to recommend this particular vendor, New England Applied Products.
We never received any paperwork that the procurement committee approved it. And what to say is too is how many people bid on it?
Just one.
One.
Just one, okay. I also, on the paperwork that we received for the meeting tonight, I see that there's a Pace Air Handling Unit. But then there's a compressor through Addison, and I see a lot of paperwork regarding the Pace unit. I don't see anything on Addison. Is there a reason for that? I mean, you just didn't make it, or?
Hold on a second, I need a minute on that one. It's probably because we didn't request it in our bid, is my guess.
Are these not, these, these, where I understand it are two separate pieces of the unit, right? One is the indoor energy wheel unit. One would be the variable speed condensing unit. They would probably go together, ones from Pace, ones from Addison.
Yeah.
Both applied or, excuse me, provided by New England Applied Products.
Yes.
And as far as, I was, I was there for the approval from the procurement committee. What I don't understand is why you didn't get any paperwork, except that it was probably just a day or two ago.
I just, I just, first thing is, I like you to know, not to add to your troubles, but meeting, I double-checked, I went back, and I looked under the Zoom document section. There's nothing listed for this meeting under the Zoom document section. Nothing. In fact, the thing that's listed is something from 2021 or 2020. But I'd like a copy of the bid and the response, if you don't mind, because I have to tell you, I did have time to read their where is it here? New England's terms and conditions of sale, and they're abhorrent. They're awful. So I'd like to see what their bid said, and I'd like to see the original bid that went out requesting them or the RFP that went out. Because I'd like to compare some of them. I don't know how much time I'm going to have, but I mean, I'm all for getting this done. I graduated from that school up there, and I know they've had issues for years, and it should be done. I just want to make sure that we're not going to have a problem, that's all.
Yeah, well, one other question. I mean, my understanding too is I see that they submitted the bid to Colorado as well. Have we had any feedback from Colorado?
Yes, absolutely. So Colorado has been through this to make sure that they are reading the specifications and Colorado recommends that we proceed with New England.
I mean, do you know if they've done any business with New England Applied Products?
They have.
They have, okay. Okay, so you were mentioning that your thought was we approve it.
Approve it, so Marty's review, that's
So Okay, so so far we have a motion. By the way, I see Dr. Carver has popped up. Dr. Carver, did you want to add anything? I think we're in good shape.
No, I just got off the Board of Finance and jumped on this one, so. Happy to answer any questions if you have it, but
I think we're in good shape. So we, our last motion was for discussion, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid worth $170,000, excuse me, $170 and $55,000 excluding taxes for the New England Applied Products, the air handler, subject to the Town Council's review. All in favor?
I
opposed. Motion carries. That. Next on the agenda is the I'd like to have a motion to, I'll make a motion to consider tax refunds, the amount of $8,455.87 as a result of overpayment of taxes. All favor? So we, you know, basically have from the tax collector that we have refunds due for overpaying the taxes. We need to authorize the refunds. See a problem with doing that? Any other discussions for you? Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the refund of $8,455.87 for overpayment of taxes. All in favor? I oppose, none, motion carries. So I'd like to, I'm going to do it differently this time. I'm just going to make a motion that we accept Connecticut's National Opioid Settlement Agreement for the town of Bethel. Okay, so what this is, there's been a large legal settlement proposed. It's with the new national opioid settlements is what they call it. It's been reached by Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. On advice of Town Council, we said, because we are not party to the actual suit, but we can benefit from the money that comes to the towns, that we would accept this by the Board of Selectmen. The other thing was mentioned that, you know, the Town Council was checking with the Attorney General on a couple of things. So I might just, you know, Marty, did you have a chance to talk to the AG's office yet?
Yes, I talked to the Assistant Attorney General Fitzsimmons, who's handling the matter. And basically, what he said was, well, my first question to him was that it seemed too good to be true that all we had to do was sign these agreements and submit and just wait for the money to come. And he said, that's exactly what it is at this point. So the agreements that we have, the four or five there, I forget how many there are. All right, they're basically a release. So what we're doing is we're agreeing that we're not going to bring a new suit. We're not going to start a suit against them. And we're releasing them up to this point for anything that the town incurred as a result of the opioid problems, which I don't have a problem with. How much we're going to get, that's How much we're going to get, that's a good question. You know, I think i- if you read a lot of information, it indicated that. Across the United States, they came up with a total of about 26 billion. In order to settle it and then it was going to be distributed to the states. At the initial time that it was done, I think the state of Connecticut was to receive a little over 1.3%. Of what the total amount is and it's around, they've been throwing the number around 300 million. Of the 300 million. The municipalities are to receive 15% and Bethel's share was about. I can't even, I mean, the numbers are so long. It's like 0.352244, whatever percent. And you have to remember that these monies are coming in over a series of years. So we're not going to get a lump sum right away. I know that they have received some funds in the state. But that's pretty much it. And the number is still changing. The number of what we're getting, they they keep claiming that. It's possibly it's going to continue to go up. For a lot of reasons. One of the reasons is there are some places that are not part of the national settlement. That were originally included. They're all off on their own. So that money's being thrown back into the into the pot for everybody. So. And that's enough.
Well, free money's pretty rare, even if.
Yeah, that's right.
So, any, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Once this money comes in, how is it going to be distributed? Is there going to be a panel set up such as, you know, the Health Director? Someone maybe from the Police Department, someone from emergency management, something like that.
Yeah, well, my, my, my feeling now would be that, you know, we'll have to get together and figure out exactly that. I'd like it, if there's some way we could use it for opioid prevention.
Prevention, right.
Something like that. I'm all in. I think that would make a lot of sense. That would, that would probably something we have to sit down with those folks and then the Board of Selectmen would would decide. Which would be my intention.
Okay, as long as, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
There's discussion about the distribution of it.
No, the, I mean opioids all over is such an epidemic. And very little actually gets done. So anything we get, I think, should use that direction.
Maybe you involve the schools with it too, you know, to get feedback.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion on table to accept or have the town accept the new national opioid settlement. All in favor?
I.
I oppose. None, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. A motion to discuss appointing a special counsel to review the Police Department FOI release procedures. All there?
I.
Okay, so basically the police has been, they've been looking at their FOI procedures for some time. And they're looking for a lot of questions to be answered, looking for legal help. So I think a special counsel would be in order. That I'll go and I'll make the motion. My motion is to appoint Nicholas Vidi and Martha Cullen Law. As special counsel to review and propose changes to the Bethel Police Department FOI release procedures. Any discussion? Brings. All in favor?
I.
Oppose, none, motion carries. So that is the end of our agenda. I would take a motion to adjourn. Second, and all there?
I.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.